Could all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome to the September 7th, 2021 Board of Alderman Meeting. If I could, I'd just like to ask that we take a moment of silence for Joe Tilden, who recently passed away. He was a previous member of this board and was instrumental on the bus amongst many other things. Appreciate that. All right, so first up, everyone, we have minutes of the previous meeting, August 16th, 2021. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
A motion has been seconded to approve the previous meeting's minutes. Any corrections, changes, alterations in these minutes? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. This brings us to outside the rail. First up, we have Allison Knott, who is going to speak to us about the pupil weighting factors report. You should have both received an email forwarded from me and one today at about 3:00, I believe, to you, which should also be in front of you. Allison.
Great, thank you. So hello, I'm Allison Knott. I serve on the Rutland City Board of School Commissioners as well as Coalition for Vermont Student Equity. And I am here today to request the board's support for legislation to implement student weighting as proposed by the UVM Pupil Weighting Factors Report commissioned by the Legislature in 2018. The report was provided to the Legislature in December of 2019. And a pupil weighting system is used to figure out the cost to educate students with dissimilar needs. The current formula is over 20 years old. And in Rutland City, we have a high number of students living in poverty, and students with socioeconomic challenges may not have the same educational opportunities as their peers. When they begin school, they may be behind or have challenges learning at the same pace as their peers. When they, sorry, same pace as their peers. This is called a learning gap. Schools use additional resources to meet children where they are at and support, extra supports to catch them close and close that learning gap. There are also weights associated with English language learners and rural or geographically isolated schools. If pupil weighting factors report simulation B1, which was recommended to the Legislature, was adopted this past year, Rutland City Public Schools would have received approximately a million dollars from the state. If applied directly to property tax, that would result in a 20% reduction. The cost to educate our diverse student population has been increasing over the last several years, leading to increased school budgets despite staffing reductions and dropping student numbers. The cost of education per pupil in Rutland City is increasing. We believe this empiric formula is the best solution, as it will change funding if there are shifts in student populations from year to year. Categorical aid or grants would simply be a single item Band-Aid approach that would not fix the outdated formula. While there's much discussion to be had regarding how education fund is funded, the formula would simply redistribute the education funds to schools based on student needs. Rutland City Public Schools and our students need your support in urging Vermont State Legislature to implement the pupil weights as reported out in the commission study. And as Matt mentioned last week, you should have received some information, you know, sorry for the short notice, there is a task force currently in the Legislature, and they are holding a public hearing tomorrow that was just announced last week, plus the holiday in the mix here. So with a short notice, we're asking, you know, for a letter of support from the Rutland City Board of Aldermen to be entered on public record at that time. So thank you for your time and service, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I guess my question is, do we have a letter to circulate? Do we have anything to circulate for signature?
Not that I'm aware of.
So I did the draft that I sent, there's a couple copies of it. So again, I apologize for getting it out late today, but there's two copies, the same thing of a draft recommendation.
I'll pass it around so you can read it as well.
Be easier tonight to have the board have you sign it?
Right, so I think I'll, I don't know if there's any discussion. Do I do that first?
If I could just interject real quickly, I did get a call from the superintendent earlier this afternoon regarding the same subject. And although I'm not as well-versed as many people are about the whole weighting scheme, I have read enough about it and done a little bit of research where everything that's just been said, I think, is pretty much true. It would benefit certainly financially and in a lot of other areas if the weighting process or implementation would be put into effect and benefit certainly Vermont City taxpayers greatly. And I think we've been overpaying for a lot of years, and I think it's time for them to pay the price. So I would support it.
Thank you, Mayor LaRue. Alderman Talbot?
So I'd make a motion that we sign a letter of support.
Second.
A motion has been seconded. Alderman DePoy.
So how has the school board taken an official vote on this? How does the school board stand on this?
So.
What are the discussions that they've had over the last several months since the study came out?
Certainly, so our Rutland City School Board does support it. We have joined a coalition of school boards throughout the state, which is the Vermont, Coalition Vermont Student Equity. And with it is Winuski, Burlington, Northeast Kingdom, Dover, some of the, Wyndham Southeast, and lots of other districts. I believe there's 21 schools represented in the coalition. And so Rutland City Public Schools is supporting the coalition, and the coalition is working on lobbying the Legislature, and that's where we got to this task force.
So, and if I may, the, so Rutland City is a big receiver, we all know that, of the current education funding system. How are the towns that would obviously be, continue to send or even send more money into the state ed fund at this point? What are their, how's it going with them? What are they, I mean, we don't represent them, obviously.
Right.
We represent Rutland City taxpayers, and as the mayor said, will benefit greatly, which we do already, will benefit more. So where are those other towns at?
So in Rutland County, there are only two towns that would not benefit if this weighting was implemented.
Killington.
Rutland Town.
Rutland Town, yep. But I said supervisory union, so yeah, Rutland Town, and they would have a significant change, and Iroh would have a minimal one. And I do not know that Killington was even on the list to be impacted. I think they do not have a high school.
Okay, so it's supervisory unions, it's not by town.
Yeah, I mean, schools would benefit, but that would come through their supervisory unions, so. But since Killington is with Woodstock, they would be receiving as well. But whether or not that would break down to Killington would depend on their pupil weights.
And last question, are you here representing the school board for the signature from the Board of Aldermen, or are you here on your own as Citizen Knott or Commissioner Knott?
I'm here on my, on my own, on my own behalf, and representing the coalition.
So, Mr. President, I'd like to get some more information on this before we make the motion to actually sign this, maybe send it off to committee. I would like to make a recommendation, we send it to Finance Committee, because we need to know more about this instead of just sending this off or just approving this. Yes, it certainly looks on the surface like this is going to help the city taxpayers, which we definitely need the help. There are a lot of other ways that we can help the city taxpayers, too. In, you know, we have buildings that are businesses in this city that have massive amounts of equipment in them that are not taxed because they're healthcare-related businesses, industries. And we are currently working on something that could potentially draw in some revenue from some of those sources. But, you know, I think that this is a bigger discussion that needs to be had than just signing something here tonight after not even five minutes of discussing this. So I'd like to make a motion to send this to the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Alderman Talbot. We do have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded.
By who?
Made by Alderman Talbot, seconded by Alderman.
I'll second.
Neri.
I'll second that motion. The motion to refer takes precedence, I believe.
All right, so we have that. We have a referral to the Finance Committee, it's been seconded by Alderman Clifford. Any discussion or debate on the referral? Alderman Savage?
Yes, my question is, you're here tonight because this letter would help for tomorrow, is that correct?
Correct, yep.
Time is imperative on this for support?
Yes. Tomorrow, September 8th, is the Legislative Task Force public hearing, which we would like this on the public record.
I have a second question as well.
Yes.
Do we risk missing out if we do not act?
Um, you know, the impact may be delayed, so a delayed impact, does it have the same impact? That's a tough call.
The answer to that is no. We would not be impacted.
I just have a question for the school commissioner.
Absolutely.
You must have had discussions on the board, has, can any of the 11.7 that the government is sending, the school board is receiving, can any of that go towards this, or is that a different?
Total, we're totally talking separate pockets, separate funds.
Okay.
We're not asking for any more money from the state. This is a formula to, this is a formula to redistribute the funds from the education to the schools based on, currently there are weights, and we're asking for those weights to be updated to reflect the, what the report from UVM and Rutgers and several national education associations stated were the needs and how to balance that $2 to support the students.
Thank you.
Alderman Davis?
So I don't disagree that there's more discussion than we just had, but I also recognize the fact that there's a time-sensitive issue. So, and I apologize for not remembering the gentleman's name, who was your chief financial officer for the school.
Cent Polemas?
And Rob Bliss came and did a really nice presentation of the finances, your budget, et cetera, et cetera. And there was discussion that this certainly would be a huge impact, and then also taking a look at your budget itself and making cuts where there's necessary and being a little difficult, tougher on the numbers at times.
Right.
So I don't have a problem signing it, and I don't have a problem sending it to Finance Committee for future discussions, because I think they have to occur. Rob had talked about coming back to this board as you get into your budget time to see, you know, to bring the board up to date on where you're sitting and why you're sitting where you are, and that would have the avenue to go to committee as well. So I think I support both motions at this time, so to speak.
Alderman Dungus?
So just to summarize, Allison, thank you for coming in. It's, this is not changing Act 60, this is not restructuring all sorts of things, this is reevaluating the weights per student to appropriately update it to today's standards. Is that accurate?
It is correct. It's also, in a sense, updating Act 60, because there could be legal repercussions for Act 60 not technically being followed based on this report showing that students are not having.
So there may be an impact to Act 60, but it's a positive impact.
Correct.
It's a good student experience.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Grusso?
My questions changed substantially since I had my hand up, but I like Tom DePoy, I almost always vote with Tom DePoy. I think he's a sheriff alderman and state representative at that time, but all I hear is that there's a million dollars coming our way, and a wise businessman once said to me, "Take the money," you know, "Shut up, take the money." That's all, I think I'm with Sharon, I vote for it, but I think we should look at stuff like this in the future and let you guys know that, and you're still with the school board, you can come in here personally, but I've seen cops standing there and playing clothes, but they're cops, and firemen are playing clothes, but they're firemen, and you know, you can't get rid of that. But in the future, you need to come in and let us know if something's happening or coming our way or whatever, but I'm going to support your motion to sign the letter. The only addendum I would have is, is if you're waiting for all of us to sign it by tomorrow, it isn't going to happen, and I know if Alderman Talbot would mind us make a motion to have the president to sign it, it would be one signature to get it moving. That's the only, I'm glad you're going to have here, because I don't know if others will be around to do it for you, but other than that, I'm in on it, and I'm also in on his, but maybe looking into this stuff in the future so we don't get blindsided with somebody giving us a million dollars. Thank you.
Alderman Mary?
Yeah, sure. You know, signing the letter is not a commitment in any way, and we're simply supporting this idea, and it's clearly still in an early conceptual phase. Given the conversation that we had when we were setting the tax rate, we should be signing this like immediately now. You know, this was the number one thing that we were talking about when setting the tax rate. So while I do agree we should explore those other options, but in addition to, not in exchange for, because we need more than just a million, we need 2 million, we need 3. So absolutely, let's sign it, let's explore more options, let's take every opportunity we can, we can have.
Thank you, Alderman Mary. Alderman Franco?
Yes, you know, I mean, I certainly agree that further discussion is always great to try and better understand before signing. I also think that this is a really complex situation in which we would need to default to expertise, and we've been given an opportunity here where a study has already been conducted, right? Multiple universities have backed up that this is something that needs to happen, along with the whole coalition and our school board. I think it's the right move for us to utilize that as a resource to inform our decision tonight, and I don't think that any further discussion would actually change our decision here. So I personally think that we should go ahead and sign.
Thank you, Alderman Franco. Alderman DePoy?
So, as I said earlier, I'm not in any way opposed to this, okay? But when something gets presented to us in five minutes and you're just ready to sign your name to stuff, I think that that's wrong. As Alderman, we should know what we're signing, okay? If you've done the research in the last couple of days, great. So have I, I've done it for the last 20 years. There are strings that come with stuff like this, there are conditions attached. I want to know how we're supposed to spend, how we are supposed to spend that million dollars, okay? Why does education funding have to come before this board, okay? For the, for the weights and everything. I, that's why I'm asking, hey, we should send this, we should know more about what we're going to sign here. I mean, if somebody's waving a million dollars in front of you, are you going to take it? Well, nine times out of 10, yeah, but aren't you going to want to know why it's being waved in front of you? Why you're going to, why you have to sign something for a million dollars? Do we have to pay it back at some point? Will that go on the taxpayers at some point? Is there interest involved in that? Is this a grant? I mean, are these questions, are these answers that any of you know the answer to, to these questions? I would say not, because I don't, after 20 years of studying this stuff, I don't know the answers to all of those questions. So that's why I'm saying, I'm not opposed to signing something as long as it doesn't bind us to something in the future, okay? So sign it tonight if you want. I'll sign it, I don't care about that, but what I do want to know is what I'm signing after more than just five minutes of explanation for a million dollars. Don't tell me you can explain a million dollars in five minutes.
Alderman Talbot?
Just want to clarify that I made the motion not after five minutes, that we got the letter four hours ago, and I happened to find some time to read it then, and this is also an issue I've been hearing about for several months.
Thank you, Alderman Talbot.
It was, it was me. I was just going to echo that statement. I think to imply that we're rushing to a decision is not accurate in this context, and also, you know, I don't think that after one committee meeting or two committee meetings, that's going to be different than maybe 20 years, but I would hope that, like most issues that come before us, we're able to act reasonably based on the evidence provided to us. So I feel comfortable making that decision.
Thank you, Alderman Franco.
Yeah, and I just want to say, too, I'm also comfortable further looking into it and it being a continual conversation and investigation.
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think because the motion to refer takes precedence, that when we vote to send it to Finance Committee, which I think we should, because there's going to be future discussions, it takes the motion off the floor to circulate for signature. So I just think you need to be aware of that.
Yes. So right now, we solely have the motion on the floor to refer to the Finance Committee. Alderman DePoy?
So what I'll do is I'll withdraw my motion, let it circulate, and then I'm going to make, remake the motion after that to refer the issue to Finance so that it can be talked about and thoroughly vetted.
Sure. Is the seconder comfortable with the withdrawal?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so we're back to the original motion, which is to accept this letter as presented and circulate for signature. One question I will post to the board is, given that we'll probably want to get it on city letterhead, does it make sense to have?
And authorize the chair to sign.
We would like to amend it to have authorized the chair to sign.
Sounds good.
Is the seconder comfortable? Okay, so the motion now is to accept and circulate this letter for signature, which will be placed on city letterhead, and to have the chair of the board sign on behalf of the board. All right, we have the motion, it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion or debate on this issue? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Then Alderman DePoy?
Now, I'd like to make a motion to please refer this issue to Finance Committee.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to refer to Finance Committee, it has been seconded. Is there any further discussion, debate, questions? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much, Allison. All right, so we are still under outside the rail. Up next, we have Amelia from USCRI Vermont, who is going to be speaking to us for informational purposes about where we are at with the Afghan refugee, and I may be even saying that wrongly, settlement. I just want to advise people who may be here for this particular issue, that she's been, Amelia's been invited at the pleasure of the mayor to speak to the board, to provide us with information. It's an opportunity for us to hear and us to ask questions. If you would like to address the board on any thoughts you have related to this issue, you will do so after, but we're not expecting Amelia to be here to be asked questions from members of the audience at this given time. Thank you. And then Amelia, or the mayor?
Well, if I could just introduce her real quick, and I appreciate you leading that up. So just to reiterate, as you read in the Rutland Herald, I received a call originally on Thursday from Amila Merzenovich, the Director of the U.S. Committee for Refugees and Immigrants. We eventually spoke on Friday for about 15 minutes. I suggested during that conversation that she come before the Board of Aldermen tonight, Tuesday night, to explain exactly what she had explained to me about the possibility of resettling a small number of Afghan refugees here in the city of Rutland, which, by the way, is a designated resettlement community, which was done so back in 2016, the year before I was elected mayor. I want to make clear to everyone that I am supportive of this, and with everything I've heard up to this point, and I think that you will hopefully agree after you hear what Amelia has to offer, if there's any other new information that I'm not privy to after the conversation that we had. So having said that, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
You are.
Thank you very much, Mayor LaRue, for your counsel and support so far. Good evening, everyone. My name is Amila Merzenovich, and I'm the Director of the U.S. Committee for Refugees and Immigrants Field Office in Vermont. Our main office is in Colchester, Vermont. Ugh, the masks, hopefully, one of these days. Thank you so much for making the time on the agenda at a last possible minute. So I have my notes here, so I will stay organized, hopefully. So needless to say that we have all witnessed the devastating humanitarian crisis and the plight of Afghans fleeing persecution. As you are aware, over the past 20 years, Afghans have worked with our servicemen and servicewomen hand in hand, and they have risked their lives and the lives of their families to protect our sons and daughters who are, who were in the military overseas in Afghanistan. They've worked as interpreters, guides, mechanics, and in other capacities with our government. Many of those individuals are now being targeted and are fleeing for their lives and looking to the United States to fulfill its promise that we will offer protection and safety for these individuals who worked, who worked with our government. And I'm here tonight to tell you about an opportunity for Vermont to welcome some of these individuals, and I'm here to share all the information that I have at this point, which I will say that it's, it's not, it's still changing and it's not thorough, but I also am committed to share information as I get it from the federal government or my head office as it comes in. So the U.S. Committee for Refugees and Immigrants has submitted a proposal to the federal government to welcome 4,000, a little over 4,000 Afghan, Afghans under the humanitarian parole designation, and I will explain in a minute what the humanitarian parole means. Out of the 4,000, about 100, our hope is about 100 will be coming to Vermont in the coming weeks and months. The humanitarian parole designation is a way for our government to evacuate people quickly who are in a humanitarian crisis and to process them and help them enter into the United States. The Afghans entering under humanitarian parole designation will be subjected to all the security screenings, necessary security screenings, and medical screenings to make sure that they enter the United States fully vetted. We know that's one of the main questions on people's minds. So whether they are first being evacuated to one of the countries in the Middle East or they're being brought to one of the U.S. bases, the security vetting and the medical screenings will be done before people are released into other states. So out of the 100 individuals, our hope is that some of those families will be placed in Rutland City or Rutland area, in addition to other communities around the state. I can tell you that over the past two weeks, we have been inundated, it's an understatement, with calls and emails from Vermonters from around the state offering to support Afghans by offering housing or transportation or, you know, any other support. And we are building a database, and we currently have about, I mean, at this point, we must have over 100 contacts of Vermonters who are offering support. The humanitarian parole designation does not allow people to access public assistance. This is another question that has come up recently in many conversations I've had. So they will not have access to public assistance. They will be offered a one-time payment of $1,225, that's $1,225, one-time payment, which will help us rent an apartment for them. However, that will not get them very far, so we are working, we are fundraising, working with community, with different communities around the state to build, build supports for, for these individuals. Another question that I'm sure is in everyone's mind is what is the composition of, is it families, is it singles? And at this point, we don't know. It's most likely a mix of families and singles, multi-generational families. So our goal is to place everyone, every single family coming in with a host family. We have had this model before, this will not be the first time that we would do this. This existed in the 70s when Low oceans and Cambodians were coming to Vermont, when there was no organized refugee resettlement program to speak of. Families were being hosted by Vermonters, and then when they were ready, they would transition into their own apartment. So we would place everyone with the host family. I forgot to mention, which is very important for, for me to say, Afghan parolees, so Afghan, Afghans who are coming under the humanitarian parole designation will be employment authorized. So they, they will be able to go to work quickly, and we will help them to go to work quickly. The goal of the refugee resettlement program, for those of you who... The goal of the refugee resettlement program, for those of you who have heard me speak before, is early self-sufficiency through employment. Um, also, um, the federal government, um, is allowing us, allowing refugee resettlement programs around the country to place people within one hundred mile radius. And when we, when, when this, when we learned about this, um, naturally Rutland City came to mind. Uh, if you remember, in, back in two thousand and seventeen, we welcomed three Syrian families to Rutland who are still here, thriving, Rutland is home for them. So, we would love to bring a number of these, um, people who are fleeing persecution and, um, who are looking to us to fulfill our promise to them to Rutland and other communities around the state. We will start in Chittenden County, and that's primarily because that's where our office is and that's, um, where we have the most capacity. And then with time, uh, that will give us time to connect with, you know, our friends and community supporters in other communities, and then we would extend, um, we, we would expand resettlement into other communities. So, the past few weeks have been incredibly scary and dangerous for many Afghan people, especially for women and children, and those who have risked their lives, as I said, and worked with our government, hand in hand. I very much appreciate Governor Scott's support for resettlement, refugee resettlement in general, in particular, for his support in, uh, welcoming Afghans to Vermont. And, um, again, I thank Mayor Alair for your support, and I look to all of you for your support and guidance as we move forward and start planning for arrival of Afghans to Vermont. Um, one other quick question, uh, point I would like to make is at this point, it's not clear when people will start coming, but it's likely they will start coming very soon in the next couple of weeks. So, thank you, I will stop here.
Thank you. Um, Alderman DePoy.
So, I'd like to make a motion to send the issue of the Afghan refugees to, uh, Committee of the Whole, uh, so that we can be updated and, um, made aware of any information that might come through from USCRI to, uh, the mayor's office, and the mayor can let us know quickly.
Second.
All right. We have a motion that has been seconded to refer the Afghan refugee resettlement to the Committee of the Whole for updates. Um, Alderman Neary.
Um, does your organization need any sort of, like, approval from the city to relocate those folks, and is there a time, time-sensitive kind of piece of that?
Our application, our proposal to the federal government is pending. We don't need an approval, so to speak, by really any community, but, um, you know, having a community support is very important.
Thank you.
Any other questions, call them to play.
So, if I may, real quick, back in two thousand and sixteen, that was already decided. That has not been rescinded, so the city of Rutland is a refugee resettlement, uh, community under the acts and, um, uh, motions and everything that were done back in two thousand and sixteen.
And that would still apply to Afghan allies under the parole system?
Yes, it would.
Hasn't been rescinded.
So, I have some questions, but they have nothing to do with the motion to refer, so I don't know-
Sure.
I don't know if you want to move on with that first, or?
Any questions related to the motion to refer? All right, hearing and seeing none, we have a motion, it's been seconded to refer this topic to the Committee of the Whole for updates. Uh, with all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Now, Alderman Davis.
So, Amelia, um, thank you for coming. I think we all appreciate the transparency of, of, um, the discussion, uh, and we set this level and, and those folks who will be, um, seen at home. Do we have any idea, uh, the number that we could possibly anticipate for Rutland City?
Not at this point. Uh, the total number for the state is one hundred.
Right.
Right, so, um, one thing we always look to do is to build community, so it's not a, you know, one, sort of, one-off, family goes into a, a community. It's really important to have, you know, that camaraderie and, uh, support. So, it's hard for me to say at this point how many, but definitely more than one family.
Right, that's fine. I was, I didn't know if, if a number had been, um, discussed at, at all.
No, not at this point.
We were hearing with the previous debate, debate years ago, we were hearing so significant numbers, um, that it was, um, we questioned housing, how that could, how we could manage housing or jobs, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that's the only concern we would have, that we want them to be successful. So, um, to make sure that housing is available, I think we have jobs because we see that all over the place, that, um, folks are looking for help here and there, but that they have, you know, we have some good housing that's available. So, they, they're set up to be successful and, um, and I, I think that was a concern the last time, just with the bond itself.
Yeah, and that certainly is a, it's a mutual goal of ours. We want to set people up for success. And when we look at the community, um, if you remember back in two thousand and sixteen, housing is number one, availability of housing, affordability, I mean, that's really hard nowadays. You know, there is no such thing, or very little, I would say. Employment is another one, access to other social services, support services, and community support.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman DePoy.
So, two things, first off, you mentioned a hundred mile radius. Now, that's of your office in Burlington?
Yes, in Colchester.
And is there, like, one in Albany, is there one over Concord Way or something?
Yes, but it has to be within the state.
It's, oh, so it's only-
Albany is, right, a hundred miles, but it has to be within New York State. There is one in Concord, Manchester, but it has to be within the state borders.
And then the second thing that I was thinking of is if you, um, bring people in, is, is USCRI going to be the only entity? I think five years ago, there was like the Vermont Refugee Resettlement Program, maybe?
So, that's us.
Oh, that is?
We rebranded, yes, a couple of years ago, but that's us. We're formerly known as the Vermont Refugee Resettlement Program.
Okay.
USCRI is our umbrella.
Yeah, umbrella, the parent.
Agency.
Entity, okay.
Yep.
Okay, so if we hear anything about either of those, it's, it's all you.
It's us, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Dungeons.
Um, thank you for coming in, it's a great honor, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, yes.
Um, so with the lack of federal funding for assistance, what are the top three things that we can do as a community to help?
So, I should also say that there are great efforts to stand up programs, both at the federal level and at the state level. We are working closely with Governor's Office and with the state Refugee Coordinator at the, um, AHS, Agency for Human Services. So, our hope is that there will be additional supports and additional funding and programs coming from the federal government, but at this point, it's, it's really hard, hard to say. Things are moving very quickly, and I feel like every day I go into the office, there's new piece, piece of information. Uh, we are really thinking creatively in terms of housing. You know, hosting families and then connecting families with, you know, a, a team of volunteers is really what made Rutland resettlement as, as successful as, uh, as it has been. Um, also, you know, I and my team will be connecting with schools and health providers and, you know, providing necessary orientation and guidance. What else? Just being welcoming and, um, you know, embracing our new neighbors. That's on, on all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Neary.
Yeah, just going to put a plug in for Rutland. First, say thank you for coming, thank you, Mayor Alair, because this is exactly the type of forum we want to start off a process like this. But a plug for Rutland, you know, we are a community of volunteers and advocates, and if we demonstrated anything in two thousand and sixteen is that we can mobilize quickly to help people, and we really rally around those folks that we care about. And the Syrian refugees that have made Rutland their home have been unbelievable contributors to our community, and I can only imagine that would be the same case again. And Alderman, Alderman Davis alluded to a perfectly, we're a desperate need of people. In the last census, we lost more individuals than any other place in the state of Vermont. We lost six hundred eighty-eight folks. So, honestly, this couldn't come at a better time, realizing that terrible sort of data statistic for ourselves and knowing that not only are we a welcoming place, but we're a place that can, in lieu of this federal financial assistance, we can offer our own, and we have done that before, and I'm pretty sure we even have supplies left over from the two thousand and sixteen Rutland locals. Let's use those, you know, so we are situated well, and I really think you should look at Rutland as a big partner, not just a little partner.
Thank you, we, we certainly will.
Thank you, Alderman Neary. Any other comments, questions? Alderman DePoy.
I guess, so my last question would be, Amelia, um, one of the biggest concerns back in two thousand and sixteen was integration versus assimilation. What's the goal of USCRI?
So, the goal of the refugee resettlement program in general is self-sufficiency through employment. So, for refugees, when they come in, the, you know, supports in terms of cash assistance and, uh, you know, other support services are short-term. The expectation is for every employable adult to go to work as quickly as possible, and people do. That's why people come through the refugee program to the United States, to go to work, to take care of their families, and to give back to the community. And that's what we've seen in our, you know, forty-year history, resettling.
And I did hear you in your presentation say that everyone that comes is immediately work-eligible.
Employment authorized, yes.
Employment authorized.
Yes, so that is our goal as the organization, to help people achieve self-sufficiency and feel integrated into the community where they're going to be placed.
So, it is integration and not assimilation?
In my mind, those two things, and it might be semantics, maybe English majors in the room can help us, but in my mind, and English is a second language for me.
I understand.
It's the same, assimilation and integration, it's sort of a same family, if, if you would say.
Okay, I, I don't, I-
Maybe you see it differently.
Well, I mean, English is my first language, my only language, and assimilation and integration in the debates that we had back in sixteen were two different things, so.
Okay.
We need to, when we're doing the Committee of the Whole and we're getting information, we need to get to the bottom of that, I think. I, I'd like to have an answer by the time we get to committee discussion as to what the goal in that regard is. And I understand the goal is self-sufficiency immediately, um, because, um, you know, they're not coming with any money unless they, and I doubt they were able to flee Afghanistan with any money. So, um, employment opportunities are going to be abound here, they are, um, in, in, anywhere in the U.S., but the problem is that I'm seeing right now is that today was the end of the enhanced benefits, uh, for unemployment, so there are a lot of people that are going to be coming off the, um, unemployment rolls and looking for work, and they're going to be competing directly with those, uh, with those people as well. So, um, there may be a significant employment, um, pool out there. I'm just hoping that the opportunity is going to still be there too, especially with, um, you know, the Delta variant going around and people very concerned about that, masks are back on, I see. I guess I'm a day late and a dollar short on that, but, uh, um, you know, it's, it's, it may be a tough time to find employment, um, and anything that we can do as a city to help is certainly, you know, something we're going to do.
Yeah.
But there are still the questions about, that are, that are returning from two thousand and sixteen, and that is, you know, how, um, people, how people assimilate, integrate, uh, into our society, that sort of thing. So, um, if we can kind of delve into that as we proceed in this-
Sure.
I think that that would greatly help a lot of people in their understanding of this process.
Sure, sounds good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Talbot.
Yes, so to me, I think the extent to which, uh, these Afghan allies are woven into the fabric of our community is not dependent upon any agency, it's dependent on us as community members, and when they get here, you know, showing them that they're all, that they're a part of our community.
We certainly play a role, if I can respond, I'm sorry. Uh, we certainly play a role as an agency, um, and, you know, we're responsible to providing a certain orientation and, you know, guiding people and, um, teaching them about life. I mean, people have so much to learn, but they also have so much to give, and the community has so much to offer.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? If not, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you so much for having me, and I look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we are still outside the rail. Um, are there any members of the community here who wish to address the board on matters not on the agenda? It appears there are none, so I, I will just read one thing to you quickly. We got a very nice letter from the town of Killington, addressed to the city of Rutland. It is, "The town of Killington would like to extend its gratitude for the assistance your town's first responders provided with the recent forest fire. While we understand participation and mutual aid obligates the town to respond to events when requested, your town's firefighters went above and beyond for the multi-day event. The town would like to emphasize its commitment to assisting in whatever capacity we, we can, such as with equipment and/or personnel. Thank you again, and then signed from the Board of Killington." Very nice job to the Rutland City Fire Department.
Make sure, maybe, yeah, the chief gets the letter.
Absolutely. All right, so this brings us to communications from the mayor.
His time's up, I believe.
All right, so, once again, uh, good evening. I do have, uh, several things I wanted to talk about tonight. I will try to get through these as quickly as I can. Uh, first up, uh, as most of you know, city of Rutland has an agreement for services with the Rutland Redevelopment Authority, also known as the double RA. The current contract was consummated on October sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, signed by me on, uh, on that date, and runs through June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four. As part of that agreement, under the terms, which is, uh, chapter two, the city and the authority agreed to review the agreement for services before, sometime before two thousand and twenty-two, which is coming quicker than we, we, uh, can realize. And in good faith and by mutual agreement, may choose to modify and/or amend the authority's services and/or appropriations for the final two years of that agreement. Brendan and I have had a discussion, uh, about this, and we both agree that this review would be best done sooner rather than later. So, therefore, I would like, and I have the copies of the agreement right here, if you want to pass them around, just so you have an hard copy. So, uh, what I'm asking tonight is have the issue referred to your committee of choice. And, um, I wasn't a hundred percent sure where you would like to send it. My suggestions would be either Community and Economic Development and/or General, but it's certainly up to you, committee of your choice.
So, I actually have this in my report, um, coming up, and I would like to make a motion to refer this to the Committee of the Whole.
Committee of the Whole.
Wait, was that a motion now?
Yes.
Motion-
I'm making a motion now, and we'll say that.
Second. All right, so I have a motion, it's been seconded, to refer the double RA look back, uh, to the Committee of the Whole. Any questions, thoughts? Hearing and seeing none, we have a motion, it's been seconded, with all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Mayor Alair.
Okay, thank you very much. Second, uh, it has come to my attention, uh, through a discussion with, uh, Alderman Talbot and some communication, that, uh, the Community and Economic Development Committee is looking for the mayor, for our office, to issue an RFP, uh, for, uh, consulting services for the study and creation of a Vermont Tax Increment Financing District, also known, of course, as TIFs, the district for the city of Rutland. Um, again, I'm not aware of any formal request that's been made, but of course, that request has been in form- has been, uh, informally made. So with the help of, um, Brendan Duffy from the RA, RRA, who has helped put together and actually done a lot of the work to, uh, create this, um, RFP, I do have co- hard copies of it here. I think you've, uh, folks have gotten a look at that, but it's ready to go. Um, I have it, um, for your, um, discussion and consideration tonight. And if you want to move forward with it, here it is and it's, uh, the, the rest will be up to you.
I assume the RFP attorney of chambers has signed off on it?
Yes, actually he has. He had added a couple of, uh, minor edits to it, but he has signed off on it, yes.
All right, I know that's being passed around, but what is the board's pleasure as far as this RFP is concerned?
I'll make a motion to approve the RFP since the attorney-
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules and has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, rules are suspended.
Motion to approve the RFP for consulting services for the study and creation of a TIF district in Rutland City.
Motion has been seconded to authorize the RFP. Is there any discussion, debate questions?
Just a quick clarification, so this would be financed through which funding stream? I'm just-
We haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay, so-
Just for proposals.
Okay, so we just got proposals and then we'll find a way. All right, got it.
So we're bringing something that doesn't have funding yet, is that-
We're just finding out how much it costs and then we've got to figure out if we want to fund it.
Just for clarification, this RFP seeks to actually get a quote, essentially.
Just now, Sammy.
Right in your left hand there.
Any other questions, comments? If not, we have a motion that has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Mayor Laird.
And one last thing, um, this is the time of the year for the Vermont League of Cities and Towns Annual Meeting in Town Fair, coming up at the end of September. Uh, the, uh, annual meeting is going to be held September 29th up at the Doubletree Inn in South Burlington. Uh, that meeting is going to be a hybrid model, so they're going to both have both in-person and, uh, online. Uh, the fair unfortunately is going to be remote again this year. So, um, the league, uh, each year also asks each select board, or in this case Board of Alderman, to formally designate a member, uh, from their group or, um, an elected official of, uh, in this case the city, to be the voting representative at the annual meeting. I have been for the last, uh, couple of years. I'd like to go back up again this year if I could, so I'd like to ask for the board's authorization and designate me as your official representative and voting member to the league's annual meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that has been seconded to authorize Mayor Laird to be the voting member to the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. Is there any discussion, debate questions? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And that's it. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Laird. All right, this brings us to additions and deletions to the agenda. We do have two additions. Alderman Talbot, Community and Economic Development, uh, Report and Report of Representative, which would be Alderman Dunges, the RRA. Can I get a motion to add these items to the agenda?
Second.
All right, our motion has been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, this leads us to reports and letters from department heads and officials. First up, Superintendent Peters, 2021 Raha Contract for George Eddie Park, page one of your packet. I do not believe Superintendent Peters is here.
I don't have it.
Or if there's anyone here who wishes to speak to this, but I think it's relatively straightforward.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
A motion to suspend the rules and it has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the rules are suspended.
Motion to approve Raha Contract for George Eddie Park.
And authorize the mayor's sign.
And authorize mayor's sign, second. I appreciate you tonight.
We have a motion that has been seconded to authorize the Raha 2021 Contract for George Eddie Arena and to authorize the mayor's signature. Is there any discussion or debate on this issue? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, this brings us next to Attorney Blumer. Uh, you have the draft letter from the city in Rutland Town to Vtrans regarding Main Street Speed Limits. This is pages two and three of your packet. Alderman Clifford.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just have a question for the city attorney regarding this. Um, I think one of the reasons that we, that we met and discussed this, and it was actually discussed in the, in the committee, was that if, um, if the board members from both boards, everyone signed this, it was, uh, to carry a little more weight. Now, I don't know, uh, I think, uh, I'd like to ask what your opinion would be if you would see if this would, uh, doing the same thing or not.
Um, yes, the way this is set up actually is to have both, um, inter-municipal, or I guess both boards, uh, sign, um, the document. It's just, uh, not in resolution form, it's in letter form, because that was the guidance that we received from, uh, Vtrans, that they, uh, they have a committee that reviews these type of requests three times a year. And so sending it in this fashion was recommended rather than, um, in a resolution form.
So, if I may, um, Matt, will this informational letter from Judy go with this letter? I mean, it's almost-
This, this is, that's more for your-
Okay, okay.
-information and for discussion. I think she wanted to point out, so she did, she did a lot of the research and I think what she wanted to point out, and I think Alderman Neary had, um, alluded to it last time, is that they're likely to do, uh, um, a traffic study.
Right.
And the, the risk might be small, but there is a risk that once you open a can of worms, they kind of will do what the, the, the traffic study tells them to. So if it turns out that the normal rate of traffic going through that area is actually higher than whatever the posted speed limit is, there's a chance that they would raise the speed limit rather than lower it, um, as, as requested. Um, but, you know, you know, again, Alderman Neary may have more, um, firsthand knowledge of-
Yeah, I do, I, that is a very slight possibility, but judging by land use context, they're very unlikely to raise it. They might just say to us, "We're definitely not going to lower it based on the conditions. You should do some work in order to elicit a lowering speed limit," but otherwise, yeah, I don't think they're going to encourage that by any means. It's pretty rare.
Alderman Grusso.
I'm not overly familiar with what's going on, but if I'm on the outside of it, um, I bought a radar gun a long time ago and had some fun with it in my own neighborhood and then I brought Chief Bosse up and he brought a thing that was like a laptop that you wouldn't know it. And on Hillcrest Road, a lot, I don't think anybody in this road knows where that is.
I do, I do.
Twenty-five percent of the cars during the monitor time were doing 75 miles an hour, 80 miles an hour, 90 miles an hour. And he said, "That doesn't warrant putting a police car up here." And that means that anybody below that was still going pretty damn fast. That should be a 25 mile an hour street. Feeling's always been, and I said this once before, you can set the speed limit whatever you want, we've got to get enforcement. And I know we're short with cops. We've got to figure out if there's grants, if there's something to do. Because when Kevin Gino was out there and, and, you know, Nelson down in Wallingford, everybody still thinks of him when they're going down there and that's the best speed control you got. And you can say, "Yes, everybody agrees with me." And up in my office on North Main Street, they're flying. They're absolutely flying. And when Gino was out there, he was pulling them over, you know? The only thing, you can raise it, lower it, do what you want, I'll, I'll support it. The real, you know, what do you call it, proof in the pudding is, is stopping them writing the tickets to the point that they say, "I gotta watch it," you know? And that's just my two cents on this. And, uh, and like I said, Hillcrest Road never got a police car to come up to look for that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Grusso. Attorney Blumer.
Oh, I was just going to say that, um, the purpose of putting this in front of you today is that the inter-municipal committee had, had requested either a resolution or otherwise, and so we wanted to, you to see what was being proposed to be signed, um, either by both boards or by the inter-municipal committee themselves. Um, and again, just to kind of give you a download of, of, uh, some of the research that, that Judy had done on, on the issue. So we'd be kind of just looking for either feedback as to how to change the letter or if there's kind of a, um, a recommendation to go ahead and at least have, uh, the Rutland members sign it and forward it on to Rutland Town for their review.
Um, okay, I would like to, uh, suspend the rules.
Second.
And, uh, reiterate what the city attorney just said as far as, uh, committee members signing this and then forwarding on to the Rutland Town Select Board. And then would they, Matt, give it back to us so we could send it? Is that because we are basically the body that's proposing here or?
Um, I think we could work that out between, um, my office and, um, like the administrative assistant over at Rutland Town to see, um, is it technically, the speed reduction is technically in the town that we're asking for? So we can, we can determine. I think they'll accept it from either, either municipality, but obviously we should make sure that, um, we know who's sending it.
That it got sent.
We both don't think that we're sending it and no one does.
All right, so we have a motion to suspend the rules who has seconded. Would all those in favor suspend the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then Alderman Clifford, motion to-
Yeah, I just moved that, uh, the committee members, uh, sign this along with the board president and send it to the town select board for those members of the inter-municipal committee to sign as well and, uh, send off to the state of Vermont.
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate?
Yeah, I just want to say that, I mean, I don't, I don't disagree, uh, at all with what Alderman Neary was saying regarding this, but I think it's important that we're on record as, uh, at least doing something about it.
And I will attend the committee meeting when they, before the board.
Thank you.
Would they like to sign this copy? Alderman Gillum's not here, but I do have a-
And if I may, I think, um, to Alderman Neary's point, if he's going to be present, the discussion was certainly the speed limit, but was also lighting. It was also timing of lights.
Crosswalks.
Crosswalk type of things. And we know that they're not going to put crosswalks in where, where there isn't a light. Um, but, I mean, that was a, a bigger discussion. Um, we were well aware that they could raise that, um, speed per mile, but I think it's going to be difficult when you look at the fatalities that have occurred. It's going to make them kind of look a little foolish if they raise the, the speed limit, um, when people have died trying to cross the road. So, um, so that was the big picture that we tried to kind of emphasize, um, in that stretch, um, because as we know, we come out of, say, Hannaford, that plaza, heading back into the city and, um, once you get to like by U-Haul, then that drops to 35 miles an hour. But that's not happening either. They're coming into the city at a much higher speed, um, through there as well. So, just so you have that big picture.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to clarify quickly. So I know that the letter itself says to go from, reduce from 40 to 35. Is the process that they open the study and then determine what to reduce it to, or is approval of the request, does that, approval include changing it specifically to 35? Like, I guess that's what I'm trying to understand.
Both, I guess. So you can make a specific mile an hour request, but the engineering study is going to determine what that is if it wasn't that. In our case, it won't matter because it will be less than 35, but, yeah.
Got it.
And they may come up with other alternatives that we don't, we don't think about or don't have funding for and they may, they may be available.
Alderman DePoy.
So I told you guys that story about right there by Dollar General, how somebody almost got hit. I mean, I saw it happening, you know, a truck and, you know. One of the things I noticed, because I go down that way a lot, is it goes from 35 to 40 going south and you have a divided highway right after that last light. And that's right where Holiday Inn is. There's got to be, and several, several of the pedestrian, um, not just fatalities, but hit by cars have happened right at that point in time, right there. Be, you know, right before the, you know, everybody starts to really hit the gas to get going toward Wallingford or get out on four. And I think that that's some of the problem that we're going to have to talk to Rutland Town about and say, "Hey, guys, what can we do to buffer that?" It's a, it's a natural reaction to hit the gas because you got a divided highway coming up, plus the, you just went from 35 to 40, you're trying to make the lights between, you know, the Plaza and the Holiday Inn, the old mall, and that's where the fatalities have happened. People crossing to go to Denny's or to get the other side of the road, maybe to go the Round Round or Ponderosa, and it was still there, from Holiday Inn, from the Hampton Inn. You know, they don't want to go to 99 or 99 is too busy, so they're walking across the road and it, there's got to be something that comes out of the discussion that they can focus on to say, "How can we temper the people's, you know, just natural instinct to want to hit the gas right there?" And maybe, I, I don't know, is it the drivers? Or do we have to focus on the pedestrians that are the ones that are crossing, just trying to get something to eat? Or just trying to get to the store at the Sunoco? Um, or, you know, whatever it is they're crossing the road for. Maybe they want to go withdraw from the VSCCU, I don't know. You know, or they're going to look at a Toyota. But there's got to be a way and it's, it can't, I, I'd hope it doesn't just focus on the drivers, because there's some good drivers that are doing 40 miles an hour, they've hit people down there. And it's, I, I don't want to say that the, the pedestrian's always right, but if you're going to say the pedestrian's always right, that pedestrian's darn wrong when it comes to, you know, a 5,000 pound vehicle heading toward them. So I, I, you know, putting a pedestrian bridge over or something, I mean, should be at least something talked about, something with lots of lights to attract lots of people that, you know, draws them to the pedestrian bridge or, you know, or something else that's just going to say, "Hey pedestrians, you've got 5,000 pound to 80,000 pound moving vehicles around in that area and you're trying to jaywalk, skip across a busy highway." And maybe we put up a center barrier, just a, just a guardrail in the middle, um, to try to deter people from crossing. Um, but there, it's twofold, it's not just the speeds, it's definitely pedestrian behavior down there too. So let's, let's try to focus and try to, when we talk more about this, try to focus the, our efforts toward both of those sides of it, not just slowing people down, which is a good start, but, you know, pedestrians have to, we got to figure a way to make them smarter.
Thank you, Alderman DePoy. So we have a motion that's been seconded, which is to approve this letter to authorize the correct corresponding signatures and then to forward along to Rutland Town. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Attorney Blumer.
Oh, I got plenty, yes, that's true.
So we have two executive sessions from Attorney Blumer that are definitely going to the end, um, which leads us to reports of standing committees. Uh, first, we have Alderman Clifford, Public Works Committee, pages four and five of your packet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, before I start, on page two, um, something I apologize for leaving out is actually the actual motions, um, that were discussed and that were approved in the, uh, in the committee, and I will read those when I get to that point. So, uh, the committee members, uh, DPW committee met on, uh, the 31st of August at 5:30. PD members present were myself, Alderman Neary, Alderman DePoy. Others present were Matt, uh, Alderman Whitcomb, Alderman Davis, Treasurer Markowski, Roy Schiff of the SLR International Corp., Commissioner Rotundo, Ted Gillan, Assistant City Engineer, Gordon Ricillo from the Rutland Herald. Jim distributed a presentation packet regarding the Moonbrook Impoundment Modification Project for Combination and Piedmont Ponds. Jim provided an overview of the milestones that occurred over the course of 2020 regarding the design and finance- course of 2020 regarding the design and financial status. The final, the final design is 50% complete. The draft easement language and surveys were developed for the acquisition of Piedmont Pond. The SLR ESA of the 126,000 was approved by the board in late 2020. And adjustments were made to the financing structure of the project, such as the city withdrew from the USA CE section, 542 program in the fall of 2020, when it became apparent that any benefits would be outweighed by added costs and time to the project. The city was advised by A&R to utilize the Whisper grant in conjunction with the CWSRF program. And step two loan for the final design was revived, was a revised Whisper application, was approved by the board and submitted to the CWSRF in late 2020. Jim then provided an overview of the unforeseen financial challenges that developed. A&R, that many of this project's tasks were unfortunately ineligible for funding, resulting in a shortfall of approximately $1.1 million. Jim outlined the collaboration that transpired between the city and the A&R, including discussions that occurred directly with the DEC Commissioner. Shortly after the A&R FY 2022 Intended Use Plan was issued, which included $500,000 earmarked for the thermal TMDL projects, the city's, city of Rutland's project was specifically identified in the IUP. Jim discussed how an extension to the 2023 had been granted for the project. A&R advised to the city, the city to complete a feasibility, feasibility study for the development of a fish passage component of the project. Roy outlined discussions that have transpired with dam safety officials regarding the utilities that are buried in the Combination Pond Dam, which should be relocated. Alderman DePoy asked how deep do these utilities have to be in order to be below the dam. Mr. Schiff explained that some of the options, including gravity sewers versus forest mains. Alderman Davis inquired about how to incorporate a fish ladder. Roy outlined the various manners that fish ladders can be constructed along the site constraints at this particular dam. He stated that if we check the fish passage box to yes, then many other components of the project will be Whisper eligible. Alderman DePoy asked how the fish currently survive in the pond if the temperatures are so high. Roy talked about how warm the pond is, and how the trout probably aren't surviving, and perhaps trying to make their way to cooler pocket upstream. Roy talked about how the tree planting will shade the pond and lower the water temperatures, which will improve the trout chance of survival. Jim reiterated how the state was helpful in assigning, in assisting the city with the financial burden that had developed, particularly with the $500,000 program. Alderman Neary commended Jim and Roy's efforts to date. Jim outlined the city's needs to be order, in order to proceed, which are the following motions that I would like to read. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I got a backup. The board approvals, the execution of the SLR ESA feasibility study, execution of the First Amendment to the Brook impoundment modification and riparian plant schedule, and the authorization to expand remaining funds for the $126,000 SLR final design contract. Jim outlined that the $500,000 thermal TMDL program and how it provides 100% forgiveness. He also stated that the tentative schedule has been approved by the state and identified the important milestones and the short-term action plans. Acquired ownership of the, of Piedmont Pond, review of the feasibility study, and scheduled a meeting with the shareholders. And this is where the motions are, come into play. The first motion was that we respectfully request the authorization of the mayor, for the mayor to sign an engineering services agreement with SLR in the amount of $15,000 for the combination von fish passage and gravity sewer feasibility study, and substantially the form presented and subject to final review by the A&R and the city attorney. Do you want me to take these motions one at a time?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any questions, comments, debate?
If there's any questions, I'm gonna defer to the commissioner.
Hearing and seeing none. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
The second motion is respectfully request authorization for the mayor to sign a final version of the First Amendment to Moonbrook impoundment modification and riparian planting schedule, and substantially the form presented and subject to final review by the city attorney.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate, questions? Hearing and seeing none. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And number three, as we respectfully request the authorization to expand funds as dated above, the previously approved threshold of $20,000 up to the maximum of 126,000 value in the previously approved design contract with Malone and McBroom, now SLR, dated November 12, 2020.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Any questions, comments, debate? Hearing and seeing none. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Alderman DePoy made a motion to recommend to the full board, and it was, the committee gave unanimous approval. The commissioner stated, to the best of his knowledge, no additional studies have taken place recently. He also mentioned that there is a metal study being completed for Moonbrook near the House Center. There was discussion regarding the temps of the Moonbrook and data that had been recorded a few years ago. The commissioner outlined the appendix, which included the various SLR ESAs, the project cost summaries that the state produced, the letter that DPW sent to the DEC Commissioner, and the agreement with the state of Vermont. He then, in conclusion, stated that we are in a good place moving forward, and we will have an additional update in January of 2022. And the presentation, I believe, was also emailed to the full board, and a meeting adjourned at 6:10 PM. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alderman Clifford. Any question? Alderman Russo?
Just a quick question. Alderman Clifford, did you guys visit Combination and Piedmont?
We did not. Did it mean the committee?
Yeah.
No.
Have you ever?
Yeah, lots of times. I mean, recently?
Yeah, with the committee. I was just curious. I went by Piedmont today. It's really grown up, and I-
All right, I know it well. You know I know it well.
I was there Thursday.
Were you? Piedmont or Combination?
Combination.
Okay.
I was fishing.
He went fishing.
Were they hot coming out of there?
I didn't catch anything.
Stevie.
So I did have a question, though.
Yes, Alderman DePoy.
What, what work is being done up there right now? I saw like some work, I mean, are we preparing for the riparian buffer zones or?
We aren't doing any project work yet. We actually asked the fire department to go to Combination Pond and clean out the, the outfall, because there's a lot of brush and debris there. And, and we were worried about hurricanes coming up and then creating a flood and overtopping the road. So that's what we asked them to do. Yep.
Okay, yeah, I saw them up there. Thank you.
Jim, is there still a lot of beavers in that? Because a couple of years ago, I had to go up, the beavers were going on to the people's property and chewing their trees to the point where the trees were gonna fall over.
Right, I haven't heard about any beavers recently.
Oh, that's good. So they maybe moved down somewhere. That's good.
It's too poor.
I was there when that spillway-
Down on Asher Street.
That's right.
I was there when that spillway put in, and it got so full of stuff that it, it made the pond fill, and then it made it go back farther and back in there is where all those beavers were.
Right, yeah.
They would ever lower that, which I think is the plan. I think you'd get a lot less problem with that.
They did a lot of damage on a lot of the properties.
My parents' house was the farmhouse for that when it was an ice pond. I grew up, there was actually sawdust there from, from when they had the ice house. I remember that very well. I was there when they dredged it out in the 60s. But any ideas or any help? I know it pretty well down there, so. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. All right, we're still on reports of standing committees. Up next, we have Alderman Talbot, Community and Economic Development. This is on here, a very large piece of paper, I think it's parchment paper in fact.
The Community and Economic Development Committee met on August 24th, 2021. Members present included myself, and committee members Sharon Davis, Mike Dungeons, Bill Gillum, and Devin Neary. Others present were Matt Whitcomb, Tom DePoy, Heather Strazinski, Melanie Paskovich, CJ Jackson, Mary Cohen, Brennan Duffy, Barbara Spalding, Ed Bove, Andy Paluch, Chris Hattori, Lionel Church, and Stephen Box. The meeting convened at 5:30 PM. The first item on the agenda was to continue discussion of a possible assistance program for owner occupied rental housing with representatives from Neighborworks of Western Vermont. The meeting began with Heatherner, Melanie, and CJ from Neighborworks summarizing their experience administering a rental repair program using CARES Act funding to bring back online 35 vacant units in Rutland County to house the homeless. The program involved a $30,000 grant per unit with a $10,000 match by the landlord. The process involved inspections and progress payments. It took a minimum of nine months to complete these projects. They emphasized the importance of a substantial dollar amount, roughly 20,000 to 30,000 per unit, needed to attract landlord attention. In terms of lessons learned, they explained that it was important to establish clear expectations about the final product upfront, including details on finishes and energy efficiency. Alderman Gillum, Gillum pointed to the needs of many homeowners in the Northwest neighborhood who may rent out a unit in their building but live primarily off social security and can't afford to make needed upgrades to their properties. Several committee members emphasized the need for increasing the stock of market rate rental housing for the professionals the community is trying to attract, and hoped that a city program might be able to complement the focus of Neighborworks and other housing organizations on below market rate. Community member Lionel Church explained that he used Neighborworks loans to purchase his multi-unit home. He was able to take care of some external building issues with Neighborworks funds, and use Efficiency Vermont funds for energy issues, but that he is struggling to find funding to support interior renovations. Low interest loans to make interior improvements appears to be a funding gap. Alderman Neary asked how the housing needs assessment created by the Housing Trust and the housing data and the downtown strategic plan might be employed in crafting a city strategy for addressing housing. Alderman Dungeons spoke from his own experience as a landlord, saying it can often be difficult to find the funding to quickly transform below market rate units to market rate or above. Instead of waiting for equity and income to build up over a period of years before making improvements, there's a need to help landlords make those improvements right away. Real estate professional Andy Paluch also emphasized the critical demand for market rate rental housing, and the importance of charting clear paths for new investors on how to renovate their properties. Alderman Whitcomb said he was concerned that so many of these housing programs address where we are, not where we want to be. Many present emphasized the need for a strategic plan and comprehensive data to drive the city's strategy for addressing housing needs. Brennan Duffy explained that the last housing study the city has is from 2018. Alderman Davis emphasized the need to seek the input of landlords in crafting a strategy. Ed Bove asked if the city had a list of target areas of investment for existing properties, and a target area for investment in new housing, explaining that such targets can help in obtaining funding. Several committee members asked how we might fund a program and who should administer it. There was also a clear consensus on the need to gather the relevant data to craft a strategic housing plan for Rutland City. Alderman Neary made a motion to direct the RRA to investigate the potential use of ARPA funds for market rate housing purposes, as well as state or federal grants through the Vermont Agency of Commerce and Community Development, and coordinate with local housing agencies on that investigation. The motion passed unanimously. And I don't know if at this point, we want to address that motion.
I'll second.
A motion that's been seconded.
I wanted to bring up potentially amending the motion to ask Brennan to deliver that report at a CED meeting, so we can have time to discuss what he found.
Sure, okay.
Do you agree to amend that motion? Great.
I do.
So do we vote on it?
All right, so we have a motion as amended. It's been seconded. Is there any questions, discussion, or debate on this? Hearing and seeing none. Would all those-
I have a quick question.
Alderman Franco.
Is the motion to investigate funds for creating more market housing itself, or specifically with owner occupied rental units?
I don't think it was specific to owner occupied. We had eliminated that.
You went down a lot of paths during this meeting.
I'm sure. I just wanted to clarify if we were-
Yeah, no, that's fair. So that was the original motion.
Good. Any other questions, comments? Hearing and seeing none. We have a motion that's been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Alderman Talbot.
The second item on the agenda was to discuss the request by the Housing Trust of Rutland County to forgive the city's 2004 loan on the Tuttle Block in order to allow the Housing Trust to proceed with much needed renovations and additional housing units. Brennan Duffy explained that the Vermont Community Development Program that issued the loan approves of forgiving the loan so long as the Board of Alderman is in agreement. Forgiving the $600,000 loan will allow the Housing Trust to create three additional housing units in place of their current offices. They plan to begin renovations after they close on funding in December. Alderman Neary asked for clarification that no money is actually owed to the city on this loan. Mary Cohen clarified that the city only acts as a pass through. Alderman Dungeons made a motion to approve forgiveness of the loan, and the motion passed unanimously. And then I have language from Attorney Blumer about what that motion should look like. So the motion to authorize the mayor to sign and record all necessary documents to forgive the $600,000 loan dated August 10th, 2004, to the Tuttle Block Housing Limited Partnership, and to discharge the related mortgage.
Second.
All right, a motion that's been seconded. Is there any comments, questions, debate? Hearing and seeing none. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, Alderman Talbot. All right, we're onto reports of select committees, of which we have none. Reports of representatives, we have Alderman Dungeons, RRA. And I believe you handed this out to everybody.
What's that? They handed this out to everybody. And I will make a few edits just because of the conversation from the mayor earlier. So the Rutland Redevelopment Authority met on August 10th and August 24th for the month of August. The RRA has both discussed community projects and reviewed several applications for grants and loans through the BiOP program. The BiOP program in the month of August saw both a new loan grant approved by the RRA for Horizon's Early Learning Center, as well as approving the VNA and hospice forgiveness of the BiOP loan received in 2018. Both of these items were approved by the Rutland City Board of Alderman at the August 16th BOA meeting. Other updates from the RRA in regards to current grant administration include the Lincoln Place Project, where the RRA is working with the Housing Trust of Rutland County to submit the requisition for funding from the VCDP. The Rutland County Parent Child Center grant also applying for their round of funding, and the Center Street streetscape improvements, whose progress report ended on June 30th and was approved, and funds have now been received. Community projects, the RRA has been attempting to reach out to Heartland Development. There was a meeting on the calendar, however, Heartland has canceled, and the RRA has reached out to see if they wanted a follow-up meeting. There's been no movement since this outreach took place. There has been no response from the Heartland, from Heartland in regards to rescheduling the meeting with Heartland Development, the RRA, and the ACCD. The RRA has also been discussing the Brixmore Plaza, and a few new concepts that Alderman Devin Neary, in his capacity, in his capacity with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, was able to tweak and design to show how community events, for instance, food trucks, could utilize the space east of the Amtrak station. There has been no response from Brixmore as of yet on this topic. Another important topic that the RRA has been covering in conjunction with the Community and Economic Development Committee is our research into Rutland City defining a TIF district. The RRA is recommending this be a two-phased approach, with the first phase to determine the viability of the Rutland City TIF district, and the second phase of pursuing and applying for the district. That is the one that we approved earlier this evening. Lastly, the RRA has been under contract with the city of Rutland since October 2018. We heard about that from the mayor. We made the motion, so I'll end my report here.
Second.
We already did that.
We did that.
Yes, we have done that. Thank you for the enthusiasm. Thank you, Alderman Dungeons. Any question for Alderman Dungeons? Or Brennan, since we're on the RRA, if you have anything you'd like to add?
Very concise, thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much, everyone. This brings us to petitions letters, miscellaneous communications, of which we have none. We have nothing under the Board of Control Commissioners, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business to come before the board? Alderman Franco.
Not sure if it, I guess qualifies under this, but I just was wondering if there's an update on the ARPA funds in terms of how we are going to designate that process. I know we talked about finance committee. I'm still uncertain as to what that process will be, and who, who will ultimately decide. I know that we have shared contributions to deciding that with the mayor. I just wanted to see if there's any update.
Any particular update about the ARPA funding? Are we still in exploratory territory?
So we continue to wait for some final guidance from the federal government, but we have continued to meet as department heads and try to finalize a document to at least bring some suggestions to the Board of Alderman. I think that that is going to be a collaborative discussion. I don't think that necessarily everything that, you know, all the ideas that we have are things that might be priorities for you, too. But so, you know, whenever you folks are ready to get going, I think, you know, we, we can be ready. Keep in mind, budget season is coming, so I think that that's going to play into how that discussion rolls out, too. So, you know, during the budget discussions, we'll be talking about ARPA funds, too.
Sure, if I may, if I may, Mayor. It's in the Finance Committee, which I'm glad to hold a committee meeting. But if, if you haven't got final guidance, I'm a little, do we know when we'll get that? I'm a little concerned that we may throw out this, and it's not going to meet that criteria.
Right, so October is what I've been told.
Okay. So you can just reach out and let me know when you're ready, and then I'll, I'll be glad to- be glad to schedule a finance.
Be glad to.
Thank you.
Alderman DePoy?
So, Mr. Mayor, the REC committee met at the bandstand in the park, so I would certainly hope that that's one of the things that's being discussed by department heads as a possibility of funding a new bandstand. I know that we do have the REC, what's it called again? The Recreation Rec and Parks Foundation, they're working on it. $500,000 seemed like it was going to be a little high for them to be able to achieve, but if there's anything, and I know you can spend $70 million of the $4 million that we are actually getting, I get that, but, you know, the bandstand would be certainly something that the city could really, people visualize and they'll see the bandstand. So I hope it's something that's in the discussions that you're having, that you bring to the board, because the board was certainly interested in putting up a new bandstand and possibly using ARPA funds or even a few dollars of ARPA funds toward it. So I'd love to see that in the presentation you make in October.
Well, duly noted.
Thank you.
Any, Alderman Franco?
All right, one more. So I know we discussed previously the potential of hybridizing the chambers. This was kind of back when, before we even came back in person. As you all know, Delta is on the rise, especially here in Vermont. We're seeing a lot of, you know, cases increasing in terms of numbers, and I just wanted to give you an update. Alderman Dungeons and I are trying to quickly assemble a plan for that hybridization, so that we can consider that. And then also, I just wanted to put it on folks' radar that, you know, we might want to consider doing either some sort of hybrid, or if, you know, the mayor finds it appropriate moving forward with more virtual aspects in the meantime. I think it is concerning that cases are on the rise, and certainly I know there are members of the public who would not be comfortable being in these chambers right now with us, which presents an issue. So I just wanted to raise that concern, encourage others to think about it, but did wanted to let you know that we are trying to quickly get that together for you all. We've had some other things on our plate lately, so we're going to prioritize that.
And just to kind of add on to that, Henry and I did talk a couple weeks back, and I gave him kind of a preliminary budget that you could add in our discussions in the department head meetings with the mayor.
So if I may, to that subject, because we're a municipality and et cetera, would there, has there been, there's been guidance from the state in regards to public meetings, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, at times, was it, I guess I'll rephrase, was it your decision to close City Hall, or was there some guidance that came from the state to say whatever? I mean, I don't know what our numbers are looking like in Rutland County, if we're high, if we're low. I mean, we have a good vaccination rate, so I don't know what those numbers are looking like. And I guess I'm comfortable taking the direction from, you know, public health to say...
So it's been the policy of my administration to follow the guidance that has come down from the Health Department, from the professionals, but it was, you know, obviously it was my, our decision, my decision, when we, you know, took some action before. We are in the process of reevaluating some of that because of the increase.
Right, right.
One of the possibilities is to ask anyone who is coming into this building unvaccinated to mask and make it mandatory. Another thing is to ask the same question, or ask that question to all city employees, and if the answer is they're unvaccinated, we're going to mandate that, or we're going to, we're contemplating mandating masking for unvaccinated people. So those are the types of things that we are in the process of working through right now, and we're about to actually meet with the unions to get some feedback from them, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Grosso?
Have they changed that law yet? You aren't allowed to ask people if they're vaccinated, are they?
Oh, yeah, I think you can.
No, that's FDA-approved.
They can tell you to stuff it, though.
They can ask you to show a card. They can ask.
No, I was just curious. I had under the impression that you weren't allowed to do HIPAA laws.
Nope, they can ask.
You can, and ask for the card. Excellent, perfect.
All right, we're still under unfinished business. Is there any additional unfinished business? We will move on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Alderman Neary?
Yeah, I've got a referral for a committee. I've been hearing some concerns from city folk about how Consolidated is operating when laying out new fiber line, and I actually even saw something on Alderman Grosso's Facebook page. It was, you're, something about cutting trees. I just think if this is going to be a citywide effort, we should probably get on top of it and, you know, have some sort of conversation at a committee level with Consolidated. And I would be inclined to send it to DPW, but maybe it's better as a committee as a whole, just considering that it's citywide.
Fiber optics, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll second for debate.
We have a motion that's been seconded for debate to send to committee of the whole. Is that what I heard?
Yeah, I guess so.
Oh, committee of the whole, okay.
Okay. Alderman Dungeons?
So I do agree that this is really important. There's a history of utilities, rail operators that come in, get their things done, and then they don't clean up the mess behind them. We're seeing this outside of just Rutland City. I think us as a city being kind of the center of the area, taking some action here, will actually not only help the city, but help the surrounding communities. The one thing to remember in this process is although Consolidated is the contracted company that's doing this, there are subcontracts that are out there doing it, so whatever we do, we have to be cognizant of, you know, their ability to control that operation.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could ask you without any objections, if you could open up the debate to more than just the referral, that way we can talk about the entire issue, and you can do that without, as long as there's no objection to that at this point. So that would be my request of you as the chair. It does need a second.
For bigger discussion.
For right now, you mean?
Just to open, because if we're going to talk about this, I don't want to make, have to make another motion, because the motion to refer is what we got. We got to talk about why we want to refer it to the committee of the whole, as opposed to the actual underlying issue. So I'd ask that you open it up to the underlying issue as well, as long as there's no objection on the board.
Okay, so we have the referral to the committee of the whole that has discussed this, but Alderman DePoy is requesting that we open it up to kind of peel back the onion to understand what this is.
Without making further motions.
Without a further, is there any objection to the discussion, further discussion? No, no, good. Okay, I think we'll do that.
Thank you.
Alderman Davis?
So I think when we get to committee of the whole for the discussion, one of the things, based on what Alderman Dungeons said, one of the things is who is carrying the insurance? Who is carrying that liability? Because I think we're all getting complaints. Sammy's going to speak to his specific issue, but we're getting complaints of them cutting trees on people's personal property, stating they're doing it on behalf of the city of Rutland. They're parking all over people's yards and digging them up, and there is no sense of respect or responsibility when traffic is trying to move, trying to get out of your own driveway, any of those kind of issues. But I think that's something that Attorney Blumer can look at before we meet, is who holds the liability for this work.
Thank you, Alderman Davis. Alderman Grosso?
What I want to do is, I was ready to come guns ablazing, and they've called me, and they have meetings set up with me, Consolidated Communications, and President Whitcomb came and kind of talked to me about supporting the issue tonight, because I thought I'd give them a chance at trying to make good. But in a nutshell, and Alderman Clifford lives near me, he saw this. I have a hedge that has pretty much around 75% of my backyard. It's well-groomed. It's got thousands of dollars of time spent on it. It's been well-taken care of, and they came in and just butchered it where the wire runs through it. Now, they could have, they had many options, of which I presented to them, and they had options of not even run the wire through it, because the neighborhood's been developed since the 30 years I put the hedge in and been working on it, but they choose to come right through. They were very, very arrogant. They were very arrogant, and that was called Eustace Cable. So if you want to know a company that was subcontracting for contracting for Consolidated, there was no Consolidated people around, and the other one was called Asplund. They were the tree cutter guys. I mean, they cut trees right off of the ground. No, you said you had to cut them this way, and they cut them off of the ground. They just destroyed it. They just destroyed it. After 30 years of a privacy hedge, I have a very private backyard because of it, and it's very sad. My wife's cried. I've broken down over it. It's, you know, and they've said they've come and made good. I don't know how they're going to make good, but in the meantime, they've gone around, and I've been told, like Alderman Davis has said too, they've cut people's trees to the ground, and it's mainly the tree cutter guys that we have the issue with. But Consolidated's the general contractor, and these guys are the subs, and they all should be put on the carpet, because they're the ones running the chainsaws. I know Consolidated's responsible, but they're not the guys running those saws. And I had heard too, from a pretty good source, that they've been cutting city trees without our knowing it, and just to get their wires run through, and that's not right. So why I would come forth would be for the betterment of the city and for the city's concern, the residents' concern. I bring this up. As far as I'm concerned, I'm not part of it, because they say they're going to make good, and God bless them, I hope they do. But on the other hand, we can't let them keep running around roughshod over our city like this. We can't, we can't have somebody doing that. So that's my stake in the game. I'm here to help, and I'm here to support the motion, so it doesn't happen to somebody else. And these other people were elderly, they got theirs right to the ground.
Thank you, Alderman Grosso. Alderman Clifford?
I'd just like to ask that during these discussions, with that, we invite like the city attorney, the public works commissioner, in case there's any kind of ties.
Right.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Do we know who's permitted them to be going through the city? I mean, is it DPW? Is it the mayor's office? Who's?
What I've learned...
Do they need a permit?
I've done a lot of research on it. They basically are just any company. You and I could say we want to run a fiber optic, and we could just start running it as long as we have permission to use the poles. So they're not, yeah, they're not a utility like CV. If we don't, if Green Mountain Power, if we don't have them, we don't have light. They're just another fiber optic. They're like Comcast. They're like anybody else who could come through here with cable, and they're just butchering the...
But they came before, well, their permission came before this board.
Right. For certain poles, for, the way that it works is each utility owns a set of poles. So Green Mountain Power may own 50% of the poles. Consolidated may own 25%. We own some, which is why the wire and cable requests are coming to our table, right? So each one approves, and once those are approved, they get to construct on the poles, because it's above ground, and that's essentially, it's open for utilities. I think the normal process is for them to come in and nicely lay wire to bind it to the existing infrastructure. They're not actually adding new tiers on the pole. They're tying to existing ones. And because they're doing it that way, they're taking a lot of breadth with their way they're operating, and I think it is really messy to say.
Thank you.
You've got to watch them when they're in your neighborhood. It's interesting.
All right, so we have a motion. It's been seconded to send a committee of the whole, a discussion around the way in which Consolidated Communication engages with the city, and to look at that in a full-spectrum manner, it sounds like.
I mean, we are a member of the OCCUD, which actually does, in theory, communicate with Consolidated, so I'm also happy, in addition to this, to raise that with the CUD. I will say that communication has been lacking between the CUD and Consolidated. So much has to say that, you know, plans will happen, announcements will be made, and there was no, like, line of sight given to the CUD to even know that that was going to happen. So I just wanted to make clear that this goes even further, and I'm happy to raise that issue there as well.
Thank you, Alderman Franco. All right, so we have the motion that has been seconded. Hearing, no other discussion, debate, or questions. Would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We're still under miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Alderman Talbot?
Yeah, so a community member reached out to me about a potential mural project, and I wanted to share it with the board. Here's an image of the mural. So a local artist designed this image, and this is what the community member wrote. "I thought it would make a great mural on the Strong's Avenue side of City Hall. Seems like something people would love to take photos with, and it would make the building welcoming. All the cool cities have something like this." So I wanted to share it with the board, and...
Alderman DePoy?
So, real quick, that's great, and I love it, I do. So I don't mean to steal your thunder right now, but I was, I'd been, I knew I had something on my mind. I was going to ask while Jim Rotundo was still here, but maybe the mayor can, do we have a sinkhole over here?
Yeah.
What's going on with that? Is that all, a sinkhole over here?
You can't change the subject, but there's a subject on the floor.
Water main break.
That's why I'm apologizing to Alderman Talbot, because if I don't get it off my chest right now, I'll wake up at 2:00 in the morning and...
Write it down.
I don't have a pen.
All I can add is there was a water main break, and they fixed it.
All right, thank. I didn't want to...
And it cost quite a bit of money.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
So where were you saying? Like, I got lost in the sewer conversation.
The community member suggested on the Strong's Avenue side of City Hall, like, people could stand out front on the sidewalk and take a picture of City Hall with this mural that says Rutland, and it becomes a thing. They put it on Instagram, they tag Rutland. If folks like the graphic, like I do, maybe we can send it to a committee and talk about how we might do this. And I think that there's, I've heard rumblings that somebody might want to pay for it, too, so.
I'll move to send to Community Development.
Right, we have a motion that's been seconded to send to Community and Economic Development. Is there any discussion or debate? Hearing and seeing none. Would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
We've got an opinion on everything tonight.
Hey, is there something else we need to share?
So we're still under miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business. Is there anything else?
Possibly.
I want to go into executive session.
Anything else before we hit it over here?
Mayor's threatening me over here.
Yes.
All right, given the...
Says I'm too chatty tonight.
You were the last time, too. It was awful.
I've got to go for these. I support them a bit more.
Are you accusing yourself?
Familiar motions at this point. Motion to find a premature general public knowledge regarding pending litigation, which the city as a party would clearly place the city at substantial disadvantage, because the discussion while develops the city's strategy in such pending litigation, will include confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the city.
So moved.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, Attorney Blumer?
Motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the clerk, city attorney, assessor, and mayor to discuss pending litigation as allowed under Title I, Section 313a1e, and Title I, Section 313a1f.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Clear the chambers and head into our first executive session.